I think we call this meeting of council for Monday, May the 15th to order. First item is the adoption of the agenda. I have two late items to mend the agenda with, including the referral from the Boundary Cap Country Regional Chamber of Commerce discussion, which occurred at the May 15 Committee of the Whole Meeting regarding the 2017 funding provided by the City of Boundary Country Regional Chamber of Commerce. And the second item is to include the notice of motion from Councilor Tripp at the May 15 Committee of the Whole Meeting regarding the recording of the in-camera meeting minutes, or meetings, sorry. And these are late items. So may I have a motion to adopt the amendment? Seconder. Councilor Krog. Discussion.
Yeah?
Pardon me?
Are you recognizing me?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. So speaking against the amendment, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to cite Council's Policy 106 for Delegations. Under subsection 6, it states that "Council may not make any decisions at that meeting on any requests that have been made by the delegation. Requests will be referred to staff for report, recommendation, and review, and then given back to council." Also, during our meeting this morning, the Committee of the Whole Robert Schules of Order were not followed in adopting this motion to come to tonight's meeting. We had a main motion on the floor when that motion was put forward, and therefore could not be passed, so it was made out of order, and I would not accept it on this evening's meeting.
Fully noted. You can vote against the amendment. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the amendment? Anyone opposed? Councilor Butler and Councilor Tripp. Now may I have a motion to adopt the amended agenda as presented? Councilor Thompson, seconder. Councilor Ross. All those in favor? Anyone opposed? Councilor Butler and Councilor Tripp. Motion's carried. Moving on to the minutes. May I have a motion to adopt the April 24th, 2017 regular meeting minutes as presented? May I have a mover, please? Councilor Thompson, seconder. Councilor Krog. Any discussion? All those in favor? Anyone opposed? So carried. Moving on to the written reports to council. May I have a motion to receive all the council reports at our regular meeting? Councilor Ross, seconder. Councilor Tripp. All those in favor?
Just a question.
Go ahead, Councilor Butler.
Hi, Mr. Mayor. My guest, Councilor Hammond, is not here this evening, but, Councilor Thompson, you attended the AKBLG Conference this year, and I just see two short paragraphs here. I'm wondering if you'll be submitting your report on the conference at a later date, or if this is your report for the conference?
This is my report.
All in favor, to receive. Anyone opposed? So carried. Moving on to the verbal report from Council Representative, Regional District, Boundary. That would be myself. I have no report this evening to submit. There was nothing really relevant at two meetings, which was the BEDC and the other meeting that I went to. The only item, I guess, that could be discussed is possibly that they're proposing to change their name from the BDC, and they will now be calling themselves, not much of a change of a name, but the BCDC, which will be the Boundary Community Development Committee. That was the proposal.
Kind of catchy.
Pardon me?
It's kind of catchy.
It is. So that was the only... And the other quick item which could be a possible concern, the BCUOM, which is the British Columbia Used Oil Manufacturers, are going to have a consultant, they're hiring a consultant now to look into the used oil situation. And that's about anything of any relevance that apply to the city. So may I have a motion to receive? What, those two little items? Councilor Thompson? Councilor Ross? Councilor Butler?
Again, Mr. Mayor, I'm just wondering, will you be submitting a report for the AKBLG Conference?
No.
Thank you.
Moving on to item 8A. From Manager of Development Engineering Services. Subject matter: Application for a Development Variance Permit to Varian. Exterior side setback from 15 feet to 5 feet to rebuild an existing deck at the same location. Recommendation is that council approves the development variance permit application by allowing an exterior side setback variance from 15 feet to 5 feet for the property located at 6408 Fifth Street, legally described as Lot 1, District Lot 534 SDYD Plan KAP 52745, to rebuild an existing deck at the same location. May I have a mover, please? Councilor Butler, seconder. Councilor Thompson? Councilor Ross? Discussion?
Yeah, sorry, I didn't see it. Whoops. But is there a map in here? Right. Is this going to impact the neighbors at all? Do we have any concerns from neighbors?
Mr. White?
To the Mayor. So the process was followed for connecting, but actually, if you look at the subdivision plan here, the lot was originally one large lot here, and in the 1990s, she subdivided and created this parcel here and this parcel here, and her house was existing with the deck at that point in the 1990s. This is basically administrative cleanup.
Okay.
The DDP should have been issued at that time, or the road located further south. So essentially, it's rebuilding an existing lot in the same location on a dead-end road, which is part of a parcel of the original subdivision. So essentially, the effect of the variance is to allow the continuation of something which should have been allowed in the mid-'90s.
Councilor Krog?
That's the front deck. The side deck, adjacent to the driveway, which is where the road is.
Okay. Yeah, it's a small deck.
Yeah, yeah, it's a very small. It's like a porch and stairs.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I thought. That's what I thought. All in favor?
Okay.
Anyone opposed? Wait, are you okay with that, Councilor Ross?
Yeah, I can tell you too.
Anyone opposed? So carried. Item B. Subject matter: Development Variance Permit Regarding Parcel Setbacks and Parking Requirements for a Habitat for Humanity Development. Recommendation is that council approves the development variance permit application by allowing a front setback variance from 6 meters to 4.5 meters for properties located at 803 and 813, 72nd Avenue, Lot 3 and Lot 4, District Lot 108, SDYD Plan KAP 92057, and a reduction of the east interior parcel setback from 1.5 meters to 0.0 meters on Lot 3, with one of the parking spaces for Lot 3 to be met with a parking access easement on the westerly portion of Lot 4. May I have a mover, please? Councilor Butler, seconder. Councilor Thompson? Any discussion? Councilor Butler?
Yeah, I think the best view is to look at it on the map there, and are water lines running right through their property? How does that affect our ability to work on that line? Should we need to...
Mr. White?
To the Mayor. So the location of that line on the property is actually not quite accurate. The easement runs to the left third of the central line of the property, so the easement essentially starts a little bit to the left of where this is shown, and we have legal easement running down about here, that runs halfway, and the water line is in the center of that. And so this is part of the legacy of the data we're gradually cleaning up. And that's the reasoning, this third of the parcel right here is undevelopable, and so that's why this house would be proposed. You have a zero lot line setback against there, and then some of the parking needs will be met on the undevelopable portion right here, and then there's the water line and the small single family. So this would be the duplex, and this would be the small single family. And the front end setbacks are consistent with the others given on the street.
Very well. Thank you. Answer your question. All in favor? Anyone opposed? So carried. Okay, moving on to information items. From our Manager of Development Engineering. Subject matter: Report on Costs and Benefits Regarding Habitat for Humanity Request for Fee Relief. Recommendation is that council receives for information the memorandum from the Manager of Development Engineering regarding costs and benefits regarding Habitat for Humanity request for fee relief. May I have a mover on that, please? Councilor Thompson? Councilor Butler? Any discussion? Councilor Thompson?
Thank you, Your Worshipful View to Graham. Have we waived development cost charges previously to Habitat for Humanity?
To the Mayor. Yes, to believe, and one of the developments there waived, and one they were not sought. There is no council policy on it, and it's also not in the Sustainable Community Plan to encourage such waiving, so it needs to be done by resolution at each time. So this is the, I have to provide that background information.
Councilor Ross?
We all know that affordable housing is a major issue throughout the province, and it's also an issue here in Grand Forks, and I think it's incumbent upon us as a city to encourage affordable housing, and to show Habitat for Humanity that we care about it, and they, you know, this is our second project here in our city, which is quite unique for the size of our city, so I would propose a resolution if we waived these fees.
The actual recommendation is to receive information at this point?
I think we have that motion on the table.
Yeah.
So we're receiving for information the memorandum regarding the information and regarding the amounts?
Yes, but then Councilor Ross can make a second.
Councilor Butler and Councilor Krog?
You might still...
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to speak in favor of this proposal as well, just like Councilor Ross has said. You know, we're trying to do anything we can to promote affordable housing, get people off the streets, get them into owning their own homes, and Habitat for Humanity does such a great job with this. I mean, this is a P想想, you know, 8,800 to support them in doing this, so I definitely entertain a motion, if Councilor Ross wanted to do so, supporting this and waiving their fees.
Councilor Krog?
Yeah, I don't like waiving anything. Couple of things. I think this is actually Habitat's fourth...
Is it?
...project. Yeah, yeah. They did two singles and then the multi, so...
All in the same...
Yeah, yeah, it's all in the same room. Yes, it's good for the community, and it helps a family, or in this case, it'll help three families, but it's not really what I consider affordable housing. That's, if it was a rental unit, that was, then it's easier for me to agree to waive fees and stuff, because then we can get low-cost rent and stuff like that. But I will go along with the consensus. But I did have a question. The electrical connections are almost $4,000, so that's to run two lines from our power line through you to the people behind me, to run to the house, and it's $2,000 a line? Seems kind of weird, but...
To our manager?
To the Mayor. So the per connection, underground servicing fees are about $1,200 or $1,300, and so it's not necessarily that those are the actual costs, but there's a fixed cost that's applied in the bylaw. And so essentially, this is as per the bylaw. It's likely it's much less, but three connections, three levels.
Oh, they have two meters.
Yeah, they each have their own electrical meter and underground connection. So those are basically the fixed costs that are applied. At this time, I was unable to break down the labor and materials portion...
Yeah.
...to see what our costs, our hard costs would be versus our labor costs.
Yeah.
And so just gave the total bylaw amount.
Okay.
In this particular area, are they all underground services for electrical? Or are there any overheads?
Mr. Mayor, yes, there's some overhead and some underground. I believe the seven plaques was underground service, and that's as per subdivision development service in bylaw.
Okay. In close proximity of these development projects, are they overhead or underground?
There's poles.
Because obviously, the overhead aerial connections are less costly.
That's why I was...
Yeah, it's about $700 for overhead, and there's a pole right here.
Yeah, that makes more sense.
So I'm just wondering why, if there's already other places, why this one is being done underground?
I think the recommendation was following the standard of underground lines as per the bylaw, subdivision development servicing by law, and it would go west. The seven plaques is also underground.
Okay. Okay, so first, we will address, we'll call the question on receiving the information. All those in favor? Opposed, so carried. So now we'll move on to Councilor Ross's...
Resolution?
Resolution. So please read out your motion, or both motion.
Right. I move that the City of Grand Forks extend relief from development fees to Habitat for Humanity for the...
My project.
Project, yeah.
Give her a second. What type of discussion?
The project needs to be a bit more specific.
Can we probably fine-tune that motion a little? Simpler and straight to the point?
For the project on Lot 3 and 4 Plan, and Lot 3 and Lot 4 Plan.
Oh, that's the other one. There it is. That's the other one.
All right, I scrolled far. I scrolled too far up.
No, no, that is the location of the project.
The location, okay.
No, the only one was for the variances. Okay. So, in other words, fee relief for the project for Habitat for Humanity. That's basically...
Well, we should need to be specific on where that project is.
There's no mention of where it is.
Would that be the description on number 8E?
No, 8A. 10A.
I can see it always...
Yeah, sorry.
Your Worshipful House, that recommended resolution that council could consider as far as using the civic addresses.
Yeah.
Yeah. So resolve that council determines to waive fees as requested by Habitat for Humanity for property located in 803, 1372nd Avenue.
That's great.
Great. Perfect. A second, please. Here we go.
A second, please.
Okay, Councilor Thompson, okay. All in favor? Vote, so carried. Grand Forks International Baseball Tournament Society. Subject matter: Letter of Request for Special Occasion Liquor License from June 27th to July 2nd during the GFI. Recommendation is that council approves the issuing of a special occasion liquor license to the Grand Forks International Baseball Tournament Society from June 27th to July 2nd, 2017, from 11:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m., depending on the projected end time of last game at James Donaldson Park, subject to obtaining third-party party alcohol liability insurance, naming the City of Grand Forks as an additional insured on that policy. All event liquor providers to hold serving at right license certificate and ICBC drinking and driving warning posters to be displayed. Mover, please. Councilor Thompson? Councilor Butler? All in favor? Anyone opposed? So carried. Okay. And C. Interior Regional Board, MS Society of Canada. Subject matter: Letter of Request for Consideration of Supporting a Civic Proclamation for the month of May to Raise Awareness for MS. Recommendation that council does not issue proclamations and direct staff to respond via correspondence advising as such, and further that council advises the Chair on the MS Society Regional Board that the City recognizes the importance of the work done by the MS Society. A mover, please. Councilor Butler? Councilor Ross? Any discussion? All those in favor? Anyone opposed? So carried. BC Commuter Challenge. Subject matter: Correspondence Regarding Celebrating National Environment Week by Commuting to Work Sustainably During Week of June 4th to 10th. Recommendation: Council receives for information this correspondence from BC Commuter Challenge for anyone who wishes to register in the challenge. A mover, please. Councilor Ross? Seconder. Councilor Thompson? All those in favor? Anyone opposed? So carried. Grand Forks RCMP Detachment. Subject matter: Quarterly Crime Statistics for January, February, and March. Recommendation: Council receives for information the quarterly crime statistic report from the Grand Forks RCMP Detachment. May I have a mover, please? Councilor Ross? Councilor Thompson? All those... Councilor Butler?
Question. Yeah, what struck me, Mr. Mayor, when I was looking through this report, is, you know, we've got pretty good crime rates in Grand Forks, they haven't gone up at all, but when you look at the incidences involving alcohol and drugs and mental health-related calls, drug investigations, they kind of top the list. And with everything that we've been hearing from Dara, who presented this morning, with the Women's Coalition, with things that are going on in the community, with Bets and Whispers of Hope, it just really, it really hits home for us just how important the homelessness situation and the mental health situation is in our town, and that it is something that we really need to give a priority to and throw our support behind. You know, it might cost us a little bit of money in the short term by providing land or providing staff resources to help the other organizations in town deal with this issue, but it's not an issue that's just going to go away. Just by ignoring it and not dealing with it, it's not going to go away. We can't expect the RCMP to just, you know, arrest somebody and then they're out again. They have a hard time holding them, from what we've heard from Sergeant Fenske on mental health-related issues, they're quite often released. So this is something that's going to have to be a community effort and not left up to the RCMP. But I just think the statistics, and I'm just, it's upsetting just how many instances they're having to deal with. And I see we have that on the report, I think from the fire chief this morning, on his report, saying that the homeless in town were getting increasingly hard and hard to deal with and confrontational with the police department. So this is something that really needs to be on our radar. I see that the next issue, I will speak to it again as well, we have a report from the TAE on six ways to end homelessness in DC, so I'll stop there and talk about it in the next section.
Any other discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor of receipt? Anyone opposed? So carried. Moving on to 10F, TAE. Subject matter: Correspondence Regarding Six Ways to End Homelessness in DC. Recommendation: Council receives for information the correspondence regarding six ways to end homelessness in DC from the TAE. May I have a mover, please? Councilor Ross? Councilor Butler? Any discussion? Councilor Butler?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Again, the number one recommendation in this article is to authorize tent cities in lieu of criminalizing people experiencing homelessness. People that don't have anywhere to stay are going to set up a tent somewhere if they can't find a couch to surf on. They're setting up tents, and, you know, having heard from our bylaw enforcement officer, he's doing the best he can to dismantle tent cities, but then they just move and they pop up somewhere else. It's not really effectively dealing with the issue. So I know there was that issue, and I think it was in Victoria last year, where the courts actually decided to allow people to be able to camp in the parks there. I don't know if we're dealing with this effectively by just moving them around and using off our bylaw enforcement officer's time to move them. I know we don't like to see tent cities set up in our town, but as a temporary thing, is that an option? Is there some way that we can agree that this is acceptable, or are we just going to keep moving them? It just doesn't seem effective.
The only level of concern I have with that, and that's already been discussed with some of the members from Bets, which is, we have not yet established if the homeless that we see in Grand Forks are necessarily all from Grand Forks. And that question has actually been, to a degree, already concurred that they were not. So we do not, again, want to build it and they will come syndrome. I think the idea that you have, Councilor Butler, is a fair one, but at the same time, I think it should be collaboratively then dealt with with other communities to see and to assure that they are not coming from other communities, because they are not fulfilling their responsibility in their communities. And if it seems here that this is a wonderful place to come to, well, the message will be put out there, and of course, then they will come. So there is a format of obtaining the registration of how many have relocated to Grand Forks, and at what time lines. There's not necessarily names of individuals or personal issues that are released, but just the head count, so to speak. And once that's established, then we will come to the realization if they are really all from Grand Forks or from other communities. Because there have been comments from certain individuals in the communities, come to my attention, that they are coming by bus, and there are people waiting for them, pickup trucks with bicycles in the back. So that kind of leads me to a very, very disturbing situation, and yes, it's a situation that cannot be easily resolved, not only by ourselves, we're not unique. Every municipality faces the same problems. It's just that I really feel that if we're going to address this, everybody has to be responsible enough in their own communities and address these issues. And I know for a fact there are certain communities that have been told by other mayors that they just unrolled them, and that I do not agree with. So that is the concern I have. We do not want to become the hub. Councilor Tripp, and then Councilor Ross, and then Councilor Butler, if you have.
Thank you, Mayor Conrad. Yeah, just in response to some of the comments that you've made, having spoken at length with Mr. Borak, the Executive Director of Whispers, and also a number of the people on the board there over the past few months, I have been given the impression from them that actually a vast number, the majority of people who use those facilities are in some way connected to people in Grand Forks. Either they are people who have become homeless here because of, you know, either a deteriorating situation with their finances, or they are maybe the children of people who live here, and so they have connections with people in the community. So while I understand what you're saying, and I do believe that that's a point well taken, I think it would be really important for us to get some feedback from the people who are actually working with these individuals, that being Bets and Whispers, to find out for sure, you know, where they feel the majority of the people who are utilizing resources is... So that would be the first thing. The second thing I just wanted to make a comment about was that I know that there are people who are really opposed to any kind of tenting situation, any kind of a camping situation down on our riverfronts or in the parks. So, you know, we have a real tension here, and it's not an easy issue to deal with. I don't know if, we've had some great forums that the City has put on, the City staff has put on, perhaps we could have a forum addressing this very thing? Just a suggestion.
Councilor Ross?
Yeah, it is an issue throughout British Columbia, this homelessness, and throughout the Okanagan, and I know it's a big issue in Oliver, Asuas, Caramias, and Costa in particular, and they're talking about these little tent cities. And I am opposed to asking people for their passport...
Counselor Ross.
Yeah, it's a, it is an issue throughout British Columbia, this homelessness and throughout the Okanagan. And I know it's a big issue in Oliver, Asuas, Karamias, and Costa in particular. And they're talking about these ten, little tent cities. And I am opposed to asking people for their passport or asking them where they're from. I'm just, it's a euphemism for you're not from here. It's, people come from all over the place and so how long do they have to live here before they're considered a local? Is it six months, six years, or 16 years? And I don't think anybody, as a child, says, oh, I want to be homeless when I grow up. I think a lot, there's a lot of problems with addictions and mental health and often they're related. I don't know what the situ, I don't know what the, in rural communities, it's more difficult to deal with. I know they deal with it in Vancouver, using derelict apartment buildings that they've retrofitted where they can house men and women and youth who are on the street safely. We don't have the luxury of having derelict buildings that we can retrofit to make them safe and appropriate for people who find themselves homeless. Also, a lot of people don't use shelters because they don't feel, feel safe in shelters. There's reasons why they don't want to go into BETHs, into a shelter because they just don't feel safe for many reasons. So I, I think, I don't want this conversation to get about, get around, be focused on, well, these homeless people aren't from here. I think that what we need to focus on is the needs of the homeless, the mental health and addictions that are associated with that. And I think perhaps, hopefully, maybe at UBCM, that might be something that we can talk about. I know that it was a major issue in the provincial election was affordability and homelessness and mental health and addictions. And the rising incidence of opioid use that is actually now creeping into our communities here, which is why we might see, as Counselor Butler has pointed out, the increase in addiction-related criminal activities. So there's not an easy panacea here, but let's not talk about where these people are from. Let's talk about how we equip ourselves to work with them appropriately. We need the resources to do that. And, you know, people not wanting to see pop up tent cities, I understand, not along the river, because that's a place where families go. But we do need to somehow find a place where if they're homeless, staying in a nice campground where they have access to showers and toilets, these are basic human, we're talking about human rights and analienable right to water isn't analienable right to shelter and that shelter needs to be appropriate. So I think that's what we need to focus on. I don't want to talk about where they're from. I want to talk about how we deal with them here. Because what are we going to put them on a bus instead of somewhere else? So, you know, maybe we need to, this is our next thing. We had a, we had a, our task force around women's shelters and men's shelters, transition housing. Maybe our next task force needs to talk about homelessness, the growing incidence of homelessness in rural British Columbia. We are rural British Columbia, we're a city, but we're still very rural. And maybe we need a task force. And maybe we need to get together with other communities that are similar to us who are dealing with the same incidents. So, you know, can we put that on our radar? But we, because we're getting into the summer and we're going to see it more, the people are going to be moving up the streets and bringing over the, they're starting to tent. So let's put that on our radar and maybe even, is there still an opportunity to submit requests for what we're going to be talking about at UBCM in terms of workshops? I would be surprised if it wasn't a workshop on homelessness. So maybe that's something we can submit, a request?
That was my question.
Yeah. Well, I don't know. I went to, I went to the workshop on medium-sized communities and in there, in that community discussion, we did, they did talk about affordable housing and homelessness. And they said, often the solution is already in your community by using derelict buildings and houses that are vacant, that the city can buy at very low cost and turn into flats. So anyway, I think it's important that we focus on the situation and not just the people.
Just a quick response to your comment, Counselor Ross. It was not about identifying individuals with passports, et cetera, because B.C. Housing does have a database and a matrix to be able to establish exactly where the homeless are because funding is based on that. And like I said earlier, it's not regarding individuals, their names or identification. It's about basically a head count. So if you had 30 in Roslyn, let's say, and then you only had 10, it has to be established if 20 of them have left Roslyn and come to Grand Forks because B.C. Housing's funding is based on that, of how they fund the shelters. So, and then if you say, well, we'll just bring them all to Grand Forks, so then you're advocating, not to establish where they're coming from, but you're advocating exactly what I've said, build it and they will come. But the costing is still on the rest of the taxpayers because for myself, I've personally witnessed where there's homeless on the streets, they leave their garbage on the sidewalks. There's massive amount of cost to cleaning all this up. And we are, as taxpayers, including myself, are burdened with these expenditures. So I fully, fully embrace the fact that we cannot just, I was asked by one of the representatives from BETHs, well, how do you plan to solve the problem? I have no answer because there is no real answer out there yet. I agree totally with that. But we all have to do our share and we do not feel that we should have to do more than our share because other municipalities are shrugging their responsibilities. That is the comment that I'm making. That's my only point. That we send them away? That was never.
Well, so are you saying that if we make an initiative, then they're all going to come here? So we're not going to have an initiative because we're worried that they're all going to be coming down to Paulson and over the Anacost because we're actually doing something about it?
That's a very strong possibility because that was echoed in, in Kelowna.
So homeless people will move around from community to community.
Yeah, so Counselor Crow, oh, Counselor Butler first, then Counselor Crow.
Yeah. Thanks, Mr. Mayor. It's easy to look down on people that are on the streets and think, you know, they're, it's unappealing. But you know, so many of us can be so close to that and not even realize it in our lives. You know, a couple events happen, a couple substantial losses, job loss, traumatic situations, and before you know it, your life is down in the dumps too. And if you don't have somebody to give you a hand up, you're probably not getting out. So in response to what's happened this morning with Dara coming to town, the things that have happened in Medicine Hat, where they managed to get nine hundred people off the streets, she's been a part of this. She's really created an enthusiasm amongst the groups in our town wanting to get together. I know Andre from Whispers is extremely excited to working with her and getting the ball rolling on having an action group to replicate what they've done in Medicine Hat. And I really hope that this council would want to be a part of that. I know BETHs is also looking for land, I've talked with Derek Taylor from the Board of BETHs, and they're working closely with B.C. Housing to get funding. They're looking for land and I'm hoping that they'll be approaching council soon. There's a lot of people in town that really are wanting to put an effort into this and it could be really something exciting for Grand Forks to make a difference for the people in this community if we take a chance and put some effort into it. It'd be a good project. So hopefully a council will support them when they do come, do come to us looking for help.
Counselor Crow.
Yeah, I would be happy to look at any proposals or plans that help alleviate the situation. It is not province-wide, it's countrywide, it's worldwide. And there is no answer, this TAE six ways to end homelessness? No. Actually, there is one way to end homelessness is if everybody that had a concern about it took in one individual into their home. Guess what? There wouldn't be any homelessness. But people aren't going to do that.
There.
So we have, and have had, locals, people passing through towns, transit, all of those things. As a community, we're trying to do our best. We have an emergency shelter, not every community has that. There is an organization that's helping out, which is Whispers. We've spent thousands and tens of thousands of dollars, if not hundreds of thousands of dollars on low-cost housing and a lot of other projects. So we are doing our part. Is it enough? No. But one of the, right now, if we house six people or, let's say, there's 20, we house those 20, it's not over. Like it, it's not going to end until the system changes, which is the addiction, the money for addiction treatment, the money for mental health treatment, and the money to help. Like if we sit there and say, let's buy that apartment building and we'll turn it into shelter for the homeless, which is transition, which we're already working on, then I think where the mayor is, is coming from is not all communities are doing it. So what we need, and we've had meetings at the UBCM and, and all those task force, everything, has anything changed? No. It's, it's a grind, it's a slow grind to get where we need to be. And it's, it's funding from provincial and federal government. If the provincial government said to Greenwood, Midway, Rock Creek, Grand Forks, Christina Lake, so, so the regional district of Gooden Boundary, here's how we're going to help you help your community, right? I don't want another study because we already know who is the problem. We need, if, if they put the same effort into every community, then nobody has to move in. Right? You don't have to go, if one community does it all, then yeah, it's, it's going to be a draw. Right?
But we, they need access to mental health and addiction counseling.
Yes, and that goes straight back to the provincial government.
Why do they trouble you more like people come to a bigger center?
Okay, I missed that, I didn't hear it, but anyways, so, so it's not easy. I'll look at any proposal that comes forward, but I don't, sometimes we get painted as we're not doing anything, but well, why don't you have, you know, a 20-plex for, for the homeless? Well, we've got low-cost housing, we've got a huge unit down there that the city was instrumental in putting together, which was the Gables. And all of the assistance we gave to Habitat for Humanity and tons of other projects. So we are doing our part and I, you know, we need to do more, but we need help. So I don't want to be the one to do everything, right? For, for the city, why should we be buying buildings? Why should we be doing this when we don't have the mental health that we require? We don't have the addiction treatment that we require, right? So we can go to UBCM, we can go to the government and, and come up with, this is how you should be funding it, right?
There are initiatives out there, they've already been in discussion with BETHs, the heads of BETHs. We had the meeting, can't discuss the details of it. Great initiative. If this comes forward, it's going to be really unique, a really good concept. And so it's not that we're not doing anything. We're looking, we're looking at a really great initiative if this one comes forward and if it works. Tremendous. So the minds are still working, everybody's taking good stabs at it and, and it's not something that we're trying to, as you said, we're not trying to get rid of any others coming in, but we have to come up with a plan. You know, it's easy to say, oh, we should do this, we should do this. We need solutions. We don't need ideas or thoughts, we need solutions. Counselor Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I sat on the Transition Housing Project Steering Committee and we had several meetings over the better part of the year, as I'm sure all of you were aware. Yes, you were there, the mayor was there. Counselor Crow? Was sometimes there. But anyway, the, there was a couple of issues that, that came out of that, that, that I was hearing from, from the people on the committee. And that is that the location of a transition house, we, we had several options that we looked at and talked about, but they want to be downtown. They don't want to be in a more rural location. One of the, one of the suggestions was the camper building where City Hall had been. Well, that was deemed to be too far away from, from the downtown core. There are those that don't want to be helped. There are those that would like a hand up and, and they can't get assistance without a permanent address, so they are not only homeless, but they have no money, which is really, really unfortunate. And I very much want to help those people, but we do not have the expertise sitting around this council table to deal with them. We can only support organizations that come forward with solid recommendations that we can get behind. And not all of them are, can be financial. It can be moral support or pointing in direction or assisting in, in finding other agencies that can help them. I was very excited to hear the presentation of the boundary Women's Coalition this morning because I think this lady, Dara, is that her name?
Dara.
Or Dara? She's, she's, I'm sure, once she gets better settled in, is going to have some tremendous ideas that we can work as a community, as a whole, and not just city council, but the community. And I include the rural community in that as well, to move forward. So, but, I mean, these are, these are interesting ideas and when we work with, but we don't have either the expertise on council or the expertise with our staff to actually jump in and start doing this.
It's come to my attention also that the new concept now, transitional housing is a word or a model that's going to start to be eliminated. I think the next move is to get people back into the active role of the life, get them into homes. And that is a better concept, get them help and get them into homes. Because transitional housing is, is like you're putting people into an institution. That's not a really good concept. I think the real concept even coming out of the province would be get them established in homes, get them identities again. And I think that's the model that should be starting to be followed, which is a much better model to establish people back into society where they belong. So eliminate the middle step, which is transitional housing. Put them into homes, find homes for them. Counselor Tripp.
Thank you, Mayor Conrad. So possibly a way forward, getting with this particular topic that's on the agenda, the council received for information, this correspondence regarding the six ways to end homelessness would be that if we let the organizations who are working in these areas in the community, I just see we just, we just had the Executive Director of Whispers walk in, and BETHs, and other people who are, the lady from this morning from the Transitional Housing, sorry, the Dandrum's Coalition. You know, if we express that we are desirous of seeing them get together and bring something forward that council could look at and make some decisions about how we could support, perhaps this is a way forward with this particular topic.
Absolutely, because probably what they are looking for, and I'm almost with the assurance, is they want a partnership with the city to give some kind of support on these subject matters. But until such a time that proposals, realistic proposals are put forward, we're just spinning our wheels. And who best to bring them forward is people from Whispers, people from BETHs, people from the Women's Coalition, working in conjunction with B.C. Housing. I think there, we're getting more, we're hitting, let's say, not the tip of the iceberg, we're hitting what's down below because what's above is very minimal, it's what's down below that we don't see. And those are the key elements that have to be addressed, the foundation of all of this. Counselor Butler.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I'm confident that we will see a group forming here in the near future and I'm pretty excited about it. And I'd like to ask council if there is an opportunity to have representation on that committee. I wasn't involved with the Transitional Housing Committee, but I would really like to get involved and get on board with what this group is about to do here in town. I think we're going to see some pretty amazing things from them. I know that staff will be involved as well and I know, Mr. Mayor, that you stated you don't want to appoint people to committees anymore, but unfortunately, we put ourselves in a conflict of interest. If we do that on our own behalf, then we're not able to speak to it in council chambers. So I'm hoping that council would afford me that opportunity to, to sit on that committee and bring your concerns to the committee and also report back on what's happening at those meetings.
Just as a comment regarding that I'm not in favor of committees, it's depending on what element and what role that is played by a council on a committee, because if we are duplicating the process, which was always my... we are duplicating the process, which was always my comment on that, because we have a committee of the whole, so if we're duplicating a process that's already in place, that is the element I'm trying to avoid. But that's not to say that we cannot form a committee where, yes, counselors can participate. It's not a general bland statement, no committees. That's not the message I was sending out there, just so you're aware of that. So, any more discussion? And I will call the question. All in favor to receive, and opposed, so carry. And just a quick comment, as I was told, we would definitely be put on the map, people in that direction, to be forerunners of this. Okay, moving on to Ten G, I believe it is. Okay. Solar Now, subject matter, letter regarding an opportunity for partnership funding for the installation of renewable solar energy projects in the community. Recommendation, council receives for information and discussion, the letter from Solar Now regarding an opportunity for partnership funding for the installation of the renewable solar energy projects in the community. May I have a moment? Counselor Butler, a second. Counselor Tripp? Discussion, Counselor Butler?
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. I'm glad that this was put on the agenda, and I remember Counselor Hammett was also excited about this project when it came through on our weekly information summary. I know we're just accepting the information, but I would like to see a motion put forward to get staff to look into this, to see if it's something that is appropriate for us. It requires a matching contribution of $25,000, I believe, so we would have to amend our budget in order to do the project. But I just started thinking, what community buildings would this be great on? And we've already got solar on our aquatic center, we use solar there already, so that wouldn't be an option. But I was thinking, either they go in the visitor's center, at the art galleries, City Hall, just wondering if there's other areas that council thought this might be appropriate?
Library. Library.
To our CEO.
Your worship on this, after staff did a little bit of pre-research before this, just to see what kind of opportunities. We do have our carbon piece that we pay into, the points or whatever. Yes, thank you. And so far, we did a little bit of checking, and it's roughly $37,000 sitting in there for a project. Now, in our budget session, we actually did have a financial plan that this money could be used this year as grant leverage, which is basically what we're looking for here. So if we had a project that was within the caliber of the 50/50 that we could use, we've already got that in our budget. So I think that it would be fine for council to put forward something for staff to look at. Now, because our buildings are so cumbersome, I don't know about a big building like City Hall or Public Works, but there's also another opportunity, I talked to this Mr. Swan, and there's also other opportunities for vehicle charging that I'm gonna also state, so if there's something that doesn't work as far as the building goes, we could be looking at that, or even solar powering our existing car charging piece. So I think that there are some opportunities that we could, we can look at.
My only concern with City Hall or the art galleries with our heritage buildings and aesthetics of it, I think it'll look nice as well, and fit with the character of the buildings. I think the Public Works, that seems like a good suggestion.
Counselor.
Well, through you, could we ask staff to prepare a report on options available, to take advantage of this grant opportunity, and to come back to council with that recommendation?
Actually, to have maybe staff, I'm trying to think what the word is here, to have research with this Mr. Swan. When I talked to him, basically what it is, is if he comes to town, we say, okay, we've got this, and this, and this, and they come and we assess what we have, and so we're not doing a whole lot of groundwork, it's just a matter of saying that we would have some interest, and that's all we have to say right now. There's no formal application, or anything, just that if you want a clear resolution, to have staff research on the interest in this, and then we can get ahold of him.
Why couldn't we not have Mrs. Swan present himself as a delegation in front of council? Then all the questions could be answered. I mean, we could address it straight point, without having it second-hand, I mean, we get it first.
Well, actually, your worship, I don't know, I could check and see if he could take and do a delegation, but I do know by talking to him that he's actually coming into town this week. And he's, yeah. He's passing through, he's going from east to west, and so he figures that likely closer to the end of the week, he's actually gonna be popping in. So, you know, he may be touching bases, and be talking to a couple of members of our staff to see what we could do moving forward. So I think that this one likely could happen a little quick.
Maybe we could have a live webinar. Counselor Ross?
I understand the concern about the heritage value of our buildings, but they don't have to be roof-mounted, they can also be ground-mounted. So something like near the gallery, which is also a visitor's center, and it's very visible from this highway, so that would be something that possibly we could also look at. Of course, it has to have good access to the sun, not so bad shade. You know, it's ground-mounted, and you can put, I know vandalism can be an issue, but they can put, maybe you have to put a fence around it. But, you know, vandalism is always an issue. If you have it on the roof, people can throw rocks. Not what we do.
Yeah, but if we're looking at the aesthetics, and you have it on the ground, put a fence around it, how's that going?
Well, I know, but at least we're doing solar. I mean, people said that, you know, NIMBYs, they don't want wind turbines, because they don't like the look of wind turbines. You know, so I mean, you know, we don't like the aesthetic look of it.
How much visibility, exposure would we have on the roof?
This is the cost of our consumption, is that sometimes it doesn't look that great.
Put it on the roof?
I don't really have a problem with putting it on a historic building roof.
Yeah, exactly. It's not that visible.
Well, if this gentleman is coming through.
He'll have ideas.
I mean, is there an opportunity for some of us to meet with him as well? Or is that not a?
Your worship, I think that this would be more or less for him to come and talk to staff about what we have, and talk about, you know, what our buildings are, and he may want to maybe take a little bit of a tour, and just kind of see what it is. I think he's a kid, he'd be able to kind of develop an idea of what we can do, what we can't do.
What's suitable and what's not.
Yeah, and, you know, like looking at, you know, what our money is that we have available right now, you know, is there going to be a project that fits within our money means that we have in our budget right now?
That would be a meeting I'd like to present, if I'm a Trumps. Counselor Butler?
So once we accept this for information, I think maybe we should put forward a motion to direct staff to express our interest to Mr. Swan, and to set up an official assessment of our city for this project.
I don't think we need a motion, they're not doing that anymore. They're gonna be doing that anyway. We could have a motion, but I think.
I don't think he'll have time as he drives through.
Oh, no, he's gonna be, he's gonna be meeting. Our CEO said he's gonna be meeting, and I'm gonna be probably with that meeting too, so see what comes of that. Yeah, see what comes of that, and then we could possibly persuade him to come back and present as a delegation with a PowerPoint, and that would be the best way, I think, to.
I just wanna act on it, not let it slip through the cracks, since he drives east to west and gets everybody else signed up and not us.
If he's got an electric car, we'll take his cableways.
Your worship, would you like it be, I would say, great for council to put forward some sort of a resolution, I've got one kind of, together, to see if council would like to, is it, resolve that council direct staff to contact the program coordinator for the Solar Now project, to express an interest in submitting a solar project for the city?
Sounds like a good resolution. Okay, listen, are we all finished discussing further receipt, then we'll deal with that one. So I'll call the question, all in favor? Anyone opposed, so carry. So now.
Up and forward that motion.
Okay. Do I have a second? Oh, three seconds. Counselor. Three-second rule? All in favor? Anyone opposed? So carry. Okay, moving along now. No bylaws, so now we're moving on to our late items. The first one being the Chamber of Commerce. So Counselor Thompson originally made that, I believe, that motion at the committee of the, to refer it to the evening. So would you like to make that motion?
I see we have the president of the chamber sitting in the gallery. And I would like to preface, make a few comments before I make my motion, because it has no reflection on the people who are holding office. My concern is that the annual meeting of the chamber was not held in accordance with their, your own bylaws and constitution and bylaws. And that the previous board was aware that of the concerns, by some, that the meeting was not legally constituted because of certain issues. And so what I have proposed, and the resolution I'm going to put forward, is that the funding for the Boundary Regional Chamber of Commerce be held in abeyance until further notice. That's the resolution. And I will need a second or before I can comment further.
Need a second. Counselor Croft, a second or a discussion?
Through you, to Counselor Thompson, abeyance for how long? Obviously, I wasn't at the meeting this morning, so when do we normally pay? And are we supposed to be cutting a check now, or is there time?
The funding is not being stopped. The funding is just being on hold until we get more clarification on this matter, to be able to find out what went wrong, and what the, let's say, the response is from the chamber in regards to, number one, was there actually a deviation from accordance to their bylaws and constitution? And if so, why? Why was it not remedied? Because as I had mentioned in the committee of the whole meeting, you cannot speak, sir, unless you have unanimous vote of council. Unless there is a situation that this will be corrected, per se, have another election and do it properly, there's many factors, but these all have to be expressed. And until such a time, the corporation cannot have the taxpayers pay funding to an organization that does not respect its own bylaws and constitution. Because as I had stated at the committee of the whole meeting, if the corporation, the city of Grand Forks lifted up this, we would have been hauled over the polls if we would have respected our own bylaws. And that's the basis of it. This is not being directed at any directors, at the president, or any individuals that are on the present board. It is a matter of the constitution and the bylaws, which form the basis of this organization.
As the.
Counselor Thompson?
As the mover of the motion, my understanding is that the previous board held a meeting a week following the annual meeting. And they knew that what, that the AGM had not been held in accordance with their own constitution and bylaws. And apparently, they held, or passed a motion that said, well, you know, it stands, and the new board can deal with it at the next meeting. But we, as a council, are in a fiduciary responsibility to the taxpayers of this community. And there's nothing to preclude the current board from holding another annual general meeting, and in accordance with the constitution and the bylaws. And, could we come back to council? It's the irregularity that causes me the greatest concern, and because of that, in all good conscience, I cannot support funding an organization that does not follow their own constitution and bylaws.
Counselor Butler, then Counselor Tripp?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. The issues surrounding the chamber were first brought to council by Counselor Hammett. At the time, I was unaware that she had been removed, I understand she was removed as the representative to the chamber sometime last summer, and council wasn't aware of that for about six months, until it was brought out that there were issues. I had no idea that we no longer had a representative on that board. So number one, I'm curious as to why she was removed from that board. And because of these issues that were brought up, Counselor Hammett had prompted me to go to the AGM of the chamber to actually see what was happening. And when I was at the meeting, Counselor Hammett was officiating at the meeting, so I was further confused as to her involvement with the chamber. At that meeting, people came forward, elections were held, it seems like everything functioned properly, until the issue was brought forward by the DBA to the chamber, that they had not acted in accordance with their bylaws. At that time, I met with Kathy Wright, the executive director of the chamber, and a couple members of the newly elected board, to find out what had happened. I was able to view the emails back and forth before, from the previous president, Ellen Cooper, and the DBA, to see the conversations that went on back and forth between them. Mr. Cooper gave a detailed explanation to the DBA of what had taken place, and the fact that they had held a special meeting in accordance with their constitution, which stated that if there was any discrepancies during the AGM, that they would hold a meeting to decide if the AGM stood or not. And according to their bylaw, once that meeting was held, there would be no revisiting of that decision. So they did, once they had pointed out to them, take steps to rectify it above and beyond what I just mentioned. It was quite a long email. So they decided to keep the board that was elected, and Ellen Cooper is staying on as past president, to keep that continuity, and to help the new board come into place. Lost my train of thought. So it actually says in their bylaws that they can't hold another meeting now, once that decision has been made, that that decision is final, and it stands. I'm concerned with cutting off the funding to the chamber at this time, because they also run our visitors' information center, and I'm not sure, at this point, what will happen with that if they don't have the funding to continue. I'd also like to know when their check is supposed to be cut, because this is going to affect their hiring of a new executive director, which is taking place at the moment, because their previous executive director has given notice, she hasn't been able to handle the stress that she's been under because of a lot of issues that have been going on there that I would allow her to speak to. So if I could just get those questions answered about the visitor's center, and when the check is cut, that would be helpful.
Counselor Butler, in response partially to that comment that you made, I've also spoken to the past president, and his response was that they will deal with this next year.
Deal with what?
With the fact that the bylaws were not respected, that that would be dealt with next year's election.
It's not even that.
That they will be followed. They were not followed.
And according to them, they've never actually followed their procedure with their, with their bylaw for their AGM, so they realize that this isn't just.
That is much more concerning now, because my concept has always been on bylaws. If you are not going to enforce them, then you might as well take them off the books. So the constitution and the bylaws that I have in front of me aren't worth the paper they're printed on if they're not gonna follow them. That is the whole thing, is to have any, any institution or any.
So that's what the new board has come into, and they're aware of the situation, and now they're going to revisit their bylaws and see what has taken place in the past, because you have half a new board coming in, that now needs to be given an opportunity to reflect.
But you can't have a new board come in if they came in not respecting the bylaws of which way they were supposed to be elected. This is the whole concern here, because you have section 4.18, and you also have section 4.2. So any individual, active member, or an authorized representative and active member, may be elected to the board after 90 days of holding membership with the chamber. Section 4.18, only members and authorized representatives in good standing for 30 days prior to the annual general meeting will be allowed to vote. Have those two sections been respected?
Can I answer that, Mr. Mayor? The DBA is a subcommittee of the chamber?
I'm not talking about the DBA.
Yeah, they are part of the chamber, Mr. Mayor.
This is, I'm referring to the chambers.
The DBA is part of the chamber, Mr. Mayor. They also have members on their board who are not even members of the chamber. So the amount of bylaws not being followed. So the amount of bylaws not being followed goes all around the DBA and the Chamber. These are situations that need to be dealt with.
We're sidestepping the question and the issues that I've pointed out here. We have now elected...
Yeah, and I'm saying the DBA has the same issue on their board.
The DBA doesn't even have a Constitution or bylaws yet. They stated at this point...
They have to follow the bylaws of the Chamber, because they are a subcommittee of the Chamber.
That still does not escape the fact that this election that occurred was not done according to bylaws. And until that can be proven or corrected, this is why it will be held until further notice. That's the nature of the resolution. Counselor Tripp, are you a member of the board?
Yes, I am. No, not the board, no. I am a member of the...
An associate member?
I am, what do they call it, a member-at-large or something like that, because I don't own a business, but I have taken out a membership.
Did you vote at the last meeting?
I did.
So I would caution from the comments you make at this point.
Okay. I am totally fine to make the comments that I'm going to make, because I feel that they're very relevant.
Because we're discussing funding here, so it's my turn.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Conrad. I just, I'm very uncomfortable with this counsel, first of all, putting forward a resolution to suspend funding to an organization that was not present. It was a subcommittee of that organization that was here, that was not here under authorization from the actual organization themselves. Then, all of a sudden, out of the blue, a motion came forward to suspend their funding when the people who were...
Counselor Tripp, I have an intro for a second. It is not suspended. It is on hold. There is a big difference.
Whatever the issue is, it's to curtail their funding until they have a chance to come and, I guess, you know, say what...
Explain what you're saying.
Explain themselves. Okay, so right away, what I feel that this counsel has done is this counsel has made a decision as to their guilt or innocence. And I just don't think that that's fair. I think that if the counsel believes that there is an issue with this organization, that we would invite them to come as a delegation, we would hear them out, and then we would make some kind of a decision based on what we've heard. I believe that that would be done with the art gallery, that would be done with any other organization that this, that the city is funding. But just all of a sudden, jump to a conclusion over some information that was coming from a subcommittee of an organization that didn't even give them the right to come and speak to us. There was no authorization there. I just really feel this is out of order. And I don't believe that I'm out of line for saying those comments, even though I do have, you know, I paid my twenty-five bucks or whatever it was to be a member of that association, you know?
The subcommittee, Counselor Tripp, has no relevance on this discussion. We're discussing the Chamber's actions.
That was when...
And to make a point here, that if the corporation, City of Grand Forks, did the same thing with our bylaws, that we just skipped by them and said, we'll address them later, we would be under the same scrutiny from the public. And our role here as elected officials is to represent all the constituents in this community. And we are representing them with their tax dollars that are being used, in a small portion, to fund an organization that does not respect its own bylaws and Constitution. That is the nature of the conversation here. Nothing to do with the DBA, whether they were authorized to present themselves to ask for funding. We're not discussing that subject. We're discussing the Chamber. They are an entity on their own. That is the nature of this. And we're not suspending, we're not canceling it, we're putting it on hold to do exactly what you said. We're not being judgmental. We're giving them, it's on hold until they come forward and come up with a resolve for this. And at that point in time, yes, then we will decide. There's no decisions being made. This is just being held. That's all. Counselor Crug is next, then Counselor Ross, and Counselor Butler.
Yeah, I was just going to ask if Counselor Ross and I could speak somewhere in here. Okay, so obviously, I didn't see what happened this morning. It's not broadcast live. I couldn't watch it anyways. So there seems to be a definite issue. There seems to be somehow tied into the DBA and stuff like that. I have a concern, if that's their bylaws and they didn't follow it, then to fund them without an answer doesn't make a lot of sense. So I would like to, yeah, just hold it and have them come and present, and then we can see what the issue is. And if everything's good, then we're back to where we were. So, Counselor Ross.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would endorse Counselor Crug's recommendations. Those are really important elements to a bylaw, the ninety days to hold office, thirty days to vote, because it protects the integrity of an organization. And it stops a group of individuals from showing up at an AGM, taking out memberships, and then taking over the board and having their friends show up and vote for them. And that is, that protection of that organization with those days, that are ninety days, sixty and thirty days, is just so foundationally important to protecting the integrity and the mission statement of something like the Chamber of Commerce. So I would not want to see those bylaws changed retroactively, just so it suits what happened at the AGM. I do find it disturbing if somebody showed up that day and took out a membership and then voted. Or showed up that day and then got a board position. And I'd like to know how many people showed up that day, took out a membership, and then got elected to the board. Because if that happened, I am concerned about it. I understand how difficult it is when you have a new board in an organization. That transition period is difficult, and there's awkward moments there. But those ninety and thirty days are really, really important parts to any organization to protect that organization. So those are details I'd like to know. And I'm sure it's easy to say, I took out a membership that day and I ended up getting on that board. I took a membership that day and I voted those people onto the board. That's called co-opting an organization. So I would be concerned about that. I'd like to hear about it. I also would like to see a resolution, that we come to a resolution, and that as quickly as possible, we work with the Chamber to strengthen it and reinstate the funding as quickly as possible so that they can move forward. I also would like to acknowledge that this new board, however it was elected, was elected during the, right after or before the writ was dropped, and immediately was given the task of hosting three all candidates debates in three different communities. And that is a really big task. So it was a difficult transition period, having a new board and then giving those tasks. So I would like to get to the bottom of it, but I also like to see it resolved as quickly as possible and the funding re-estimated as quickly as possible.
Counselor Butler.
You know, every organization makes mistakes, right? I mean, this morning, we held a meeting to discuss this. And according to our Procedures bylaw, nineteen forty-six, two thousand and thirteen, at the Committee of the Whole, a member may speak any number of times on the same motion. Yet I was denied that ability. I was told I was only allowed to speak twice to this motion, so our bylaw was not followed. So I don't know if we can endorse any organization that does not follow their own bylaws on a motion they put forward. Also, this morning, Roberts' rules were not followed in passing this motion on to tonight's meetings, because you guys had a main motion on the table. You put forward another main motion and passed that without dealing with the first main motion. You went against Roberts' rules of order, which are also contained in our Procedures bylaw, and you did not follow our bylaw there. So, you know, we also have Policy one oh six that states that anything that's brought forward by a delegation will go back to staff for consideration before coming before council. So again, you haven't followed your policy there. You have a policy that states every member of this council can attend the AKPLG. You didn't follow your policy there. So you know, this organization...
Yeah.
No, you didn't.
Yes, we did.
This organization...
I apologize.
The policy states that every member of this council and staff has the ability to attend the AKPLG, as in our policy.
Yeah, that you have the ability to attend.
So if this council isn't going to follow their own policies and their own bylaws, shouldn't we be held to the same accountability as the Chamber of Commerce? You know what? We made mistakes. They've made mistakes. They held a meeting to try and rectify it. And if you give the President a chance to speak while he's here tonight, you might be able to hear that. If you contacted the Chamber, they might have been able to explain things to you. They had an open house on Friday. If you were that concerned, you could have attended their open house and found all these things out for yourself, like I did.
But that delegation didn't ask. They asked that they get separate funding, so we never gave them what they asked for.
Yeah, exactly.
We never, they never...
There was no request for funding, sir. I will say it again, you cannot speak unless it is unanimous.
We just asked the US present to the board and ask for a unanimous vote. That's all I'm asking. I've been here three times to speak, twice this morning, and I'm here again. I work for a living, I have a child, and I'm taking my time for free to volunteer to work for the Chamber, to volunteer to work for the Community Center. I'm doing my part for free. You guys are all getting paychecks, and I'm trying to build this city and help the city for free. And here I am, once again, for the third time today. And all I'm asking is to speak to what everyone's saying, and I'm sure I can resolve everything in a few minutes.
I just want to respond to Counselor Butler's comment that everybody makes a mistake. When you have a bylaw in the book and you are going for a position on a board, those bylaws have to be respected, because as that individual going for that position, there should be enough integrity and professionalism there, that first and foremost, you would respect the bylaws that you are entertaining to go on to a board. If from the onslaught, that is not respected, that cannot be deemed as a mistake.
Counselor Thompson.
One of the comments that Counselor Butler made that causes me really great concern is that it had to do with the Chamber of Commerce never following, or not always following their bylaws and constitutions, and what it came to their AGMs. If that's the case, that causes me real concern, that as a counsel and as a city, we have been funding an organization that for, I don't know how many years, have not followed their own Constitution and bylaws and...
That's a clear accusation.
Yeah. That's, that really causes me concern.
So Ellen Cooper doesn't follow? I can't imagine it. I don't think that's right. Any response to that?
No, I think you've already spoken three times.
It's only twice, but yeah.
Let her...
Go ahead.
Yeah.
As long as we don't bring up more policies.
That's a statement that was sent to me by the Executive Director, and something that she's spoken to the board about on numerous occasions, that she was also concerned about, that hadn't been needed. So she's hoping that with this new board, there will be compliance. A lot of organizations, nonprofits especially, have things contained within their Constitution that they're not aware of until it's brought to their attention. So I'm hoping that the new board will have a chance to rectify these issues that have now been brought forward. The old board dealt with it according to the stipulations in their bylaw, once it was brought to their attention. And now the new board moving forward is definitely aware of the issues within the Constitution that they need to address. I also had two questions earlier that weren't answered. I was wondering why Counselor Hammitt was removed from the Chamber as a representative, and why counsel didn't have a replacement representative put onto that board?
Counselor Hammitt was never removed. She left.
Okay, I've heard different stories, but I wasn't aware of any of that situation taking place. So counsel's never been briefed on why our representative, why our liaison hasn't been there for the past, I don't know how long. It would have made things a lot easier for counsel to know what was going on had we had a liaison on that board.
Counselor never, was never really an official liaison, because you already, as we discussed earlier, you knew my position when it comes to liaisons to other organizations, because they have their opportunity to present themselves at a Committee of the Whole, which she acknowledged she was not an official liaison, like Counselor Ross was to the gallery, if you recall. So this was more or less an unofficial position that she held. And when her and I, we discussed this, she was leaving anyway, because she was part of the DBA.
Well, the DBA is part of the Chamber, but that's unfortunate, because every motion that Counselor Hammitt has voted on to give them funding, she would then be in a direct pecuniary conflict of interest if she was not appointed by this counsel, which I believe she was back in the beginning.
Maybe in the beginning.
Yeah, so she was an official representative appointed by counsel, because like I said, otherwise you just put her in a very difficult situation. And through you, Torcy, I was just wondering when the Chamber was expecting to receive their funding?
Partial response would be until this is settled.
Your worship, we would have to check the fee for service contract, see what the dates are.
At this time, it's irrelevant.
Follow-up to that, Mr. Mayor. Where is the fee for service contract? Because I've looked for it on the computer system and can't find it.
Your worship, it's in the staff server. It's the staff server.
So counsel doesn't have access to that?
No.
Counselor Tripp? Oh, sorry, Counselor Crug, and then Counselor Tripp, that'll be your last stab at it. Go ahead, Counselor Crug.
There's a lot of questions. There's a lot of who said this and who said that, and what director, what board, all of that. And it does cause concern. Like, I think that if we get the answers to those, a bunch of those things, then there shouldn't be a problem, right? I would be in favor of allowing the President to speak. I'm not a hundred percent sure if that would be appropriate without some other board members or time to actually put something together. We've had issues in the past with all kinds of organizations. And if there's a problem, we ask them to come in, they sit down, we sit down, what's the problem? Okay? We don't have a problem? Have a nice day. So why are we going around and around about, and then pulling in weird things from other areas and stuff? So, yeah, I, you know, like, I think we just need to set up a meeting to do it. Like, we can call a special meeting whenever we want.
Counselor Tripp, and then Counselor Thompson.
Thank you, Mayor Conrad. Yes, I absolutely agree with Counselor Crug, and I...
Back to you.
Sorry. I absolutely agree with Counselor Crug, and also Counselor Ross had suggested that it would be good to get to the bottom of this and see if we could get things back on track as quickly as possible. I take the point that you're saying that possibly the chairman here doesn't have some other of his board with him, and so that that might be an issue. But I would be very willing to ask counsel and, or the mayor, to ask counsel if we could unanimously vote to let him have the floor.
Ms. Corrigan.
I'll second her motion.
Oh, did you make one?
Sure, I'll make it as a motion if it needs to be.
My recommendation would be against that, because, first of all, we only have one member of the board here.
Two.
He has two. Well, how many are on the board?
Quite self-inshamed.
Only two board members?
Yes. Love, this was such short notice, sir, and we're trying to get everyone together. I've worked all day and I'm here now. I'm just here to make this city a better place. I'm not trying to cause a fight, not cause a war.
Anyway, my concern is the fact of holding the funding is not a leverage tactic, but it is one that will assure expediency to have this resolved, because this cannot go on and be left with any kind of length that it's not going to be addressed.
I'm here now, and I'm glad to go over all of it and get to the bottom of this and have it resolved before you leave here tonight.
That's expediency.
Yeah, well, I want to hear from all of the board, just like we have all the other...
There's nine.
There's nine.
And just like, this was such short notice, trying to get one together, it was very tough.
And without being disrespectful, so was the election. It was short notice. It's been too short and too fast.
Well, but they also carried a secondary meeting, and according to the bylaws four dash three five, once they have another meeting, they resolve it. And they voted unanimously.
It was not resolved, because I spoke to the previous president, it was not resolved. It was not resolved. But he could not discuss it any further, because it was in camera. So it was not resolved, sir. So I would not be sitting here having this discussion if I felt it was in any way resolved. It was not resolved. The bylaws were not respected, there was no resolve. It had a second meeting, and it was still not resolved. But I'm not going to have any discussion here, sir, because until we have a unanimous vote, and I vote against it.
Ms. Corrigan, Counselor Thompson.
We have identified an issue that we want to address with the Chamber. We have identified an issue that we want to address with the chamber, and no disrespect to you, Dean, at all, we've all had a very long day. And I think that in order to give the issue the time that it deserves so that we can have a, a good discussion, those of us that have concerns with how it was handled can again bring forward and the chamber can respond accordingly. I know the counselors, Butler and Tripp, have tried to do an admirable job in defending the chamber. However, they're not on the board. And so I would, from my own perspective, I would prefer to have a separate discussion on a different day so that we're all fresh, that we're not tired, it can be maybe a little more reasonable on some issues than, than trying to get you to come up and, and start trying to answer questions that you may not have all of the answers to the, to the things that we want to know, and so it can be a back and forth thing. And I think that's fair to, not only to the chamber, but to the citizens of Grand Forks as well.
And just so you're aware of, this topic also came up at the RDKB table very briefly. I'm not going to get into any details, but just so you have the assuredness to realize this is not done yet just by here at City Council. By no means is it done, not even close to. So there will be more blowback coming. Let's have a meeting. So now I'm going to call the question.
I'd like to put forward an amendment to the motion. I'd like to put forward an amendment to the motion that if you, I believe the beginning of the motion states that you're going to withhold or suspend or whatever the mayor wanted to order of the funding to the Chamber of Commerce, but my amendment would be until such time that a meeting is held with the board of the chamber before the end of the month.
With a satisfactory--
Yeah, exactly, because a meeting, holding a meeting and there's no resolve to the problem does not answer the question.
Until such time as a resolution is attained through a meeting with the chamber before the end of the month.
I don't think we need to be specific. I think until further notice answers it, that will put enough incentive for the chamber to come forward, Counselor Butler.
My amendment stands, Mr. Mayor.
So if you have a second, or like, second, we'll vote on it. Okay?
You're approving my motion?
Yes. I'm adding--
But Counselor could add a motion on that.
No, your motion was on the floor first.
Your motion's on the floor, they're amending it, so all in favor--
Oh, you're right, we had a motion on the floor to speak unanimously. The mayor said that he was going to vote against that, so I guess technically we should vote on it before we put forward--
Sorry, but we had a motion, we actually have a motion on the floor.
With the funding on hold.
Counselor Tripp put forward a motion, so we have to, exactly as you said in the book this morning, we have to deal with that one first.
Her first motion.
Yeah, yeah, let's first.
Put the funding on hold.
Yeah.
Then your motion was out of order. Yes.
So I'm going to call the question--
So I'm putting forward an amendment to the motion that you're voting on, to Counselor Thompson, to suspend the funding until--
Hold the funding in abeyance.
To hold the funding in abeyance until a satisfactory agreement is reached with the chamber, through a meeting with the chamber before the end of the month.
I'll second.
All the question, all in favor of the amendment?
Can I speak?
Yes.
May I?
Counselor Ross.
Just to be clear, we could have a meeting, I agree, we need to have a meeting ASAP, even a special meeting specifically to deal with this, it's very important, but we may not come to a resolution at that meeting before the end of the month. So I definitely want to meet with the board and get as much information as possible in the next 10 days, but, before the end of the month, but we may not. So are you suggesting that we're actually going to even have a resolution before the end of the month?
A resolve?
Yeah, a resolve. Result--
I thought the meeting was by the--
Yeah.
You said satisfactory resolution.
In the hope of a satisfactory resolution.
If I speak five minutes, please, Mr. Mayor?
Sure.
And when I say a meeting, I mean an open public meeting. You know, Kate busted us in the hallway earlier, four of us chatting about this discussion, and she said, hey, you guys, you got a quorum. And she has a really valid point though, because quite often we have briefings--
Well, we didn't mean to--
We have briefings all the time where we have quorum and there are no, no minutes taken, and I've had an issue with that from the moment we started.
And no decisions made.
And no decisions made.
Right, but I, I would like this to be done in an open public meeting so that everything's out in the open, put in a house of review.
Sure.
So that would involve calling a special meeting.
Yeah.
Fair enough.
So when the--
You didn't answer my question.
So did you want to amend my amendment?
No, I just, but, so you're, in your amendment, you're asking I, that we hold a special meeting with, before the end of the month, and that the issue be resolved.
I understand what you're saying, that you're saying that at the meeting, we might gather information but not come to a resolve at that meeting. So if you wanted to change the wording with the intent of coming to a, a resolution on the family issue and restate--
That should be our intent, absolutely.
Yeah, because I mean, we got a business center that has to be running. The DVA has money that they want for their sign project that's now going to be on hold. That sign project that we all love is now not going to have its funding coming to us.
Well, it's a thought that they said they have their funds already in place for that.
Yeah, but there's apparently a conditional thing put on that now too, so we won't discuss that.
We don't want this--
No, we don't want, you know what, can you rephrase it?
Anyway.
Why don't we see what staff has written down?
They have longer than we have.
They interpret the times.
I think if, if the motion stays until further notice, that will definitely expedite the process because there will be incentive there for the board to immediately, as soon as possible, get a resolve for this. If we start putting specific timelines to this, again, if we don't meet those timelines, we're going to have to meet again to make another resolution. Meanwhile, there's no money being handed out at this particular point in time, to the best of my knowledge, there's not a check being cracked here at this point in time. So I think unless we start specifying two weeks or three weeks, that, that's a ridiculous scenario because if we run in again to a flood situation, whatever, no. We're not suspending the funding, we're putting it on hold until such a time. Garciao?
Your worship, might I suggest that they come to the regular meeting at the end of the month as a delegation. Usually we don't have them at a regular meeting, but I think that because of the time sensitivity that that might be maybe the best form. Just speaking to the fact that we don't have full staff here for the next week to put something together, it still takes a while to put agendas together and--
See what I'm saying? It's very, very time constrained. Counselor Thompson?
I appreciate what the interim CEO was saying. I have two comments. One, I would like it to be a separate discussion because if we put it on the regular meeting, there's timelines, there's timeframes that we have to--
Ten minutes.
Yeah. And so this is too important an issue to, to say, well, it has to be discussed and resolved in 10 minutes. So I would like to suggest that not this week have, have another meeting, but perhaps the week following.
No, that's the week of 23rd, there's meetings at the curling ring, and then I have an RDKB meeting, Gary Berry and all those, so the whole week is consumed from Tuesday to Friday.
Okay, so the presentation's 10 minutes, but we can ask questions for as long as we want.
What about before or after?
Yeah, what if we had, what if we had a discussion, a roundtable discussion with the chamber prior to--
My only, my only concern with a public meeting again in this nature, are we going to be confronted again by the chamber where they're going to say, well, we can't discuss this because this was discussed in camera and issues like that? So we're not going to come to a resolve again. You see, that's, this is where the concern is.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I think it would be best, because of the elements involved here, that this be held as an in-camera and then released from in-camera if all the information is privy to the public. And it should be then, according to Counselor Butler, she's so convinced that it could be public, then there's no harm in releasing it to the public. But just to protect any individuals, if any names come up, if anything happens, this should not be held in a public meeting on the, on the forefront at the beginning, just in case, because this is a very sensitive issue.
Yeah, it's, it's too important to be just not thoroughly addressed.
But in the meantime, we're struggling already with timelines, and this is why I'm saying to specifically state timelines. I think the resolution that you put forward speaks for itself until further notice. And then if timelines can be expediated, it will not be on council's part to drag our tails behind it. So we're definitely ready to, to receive the, whatever resolve has to be done. So I think it's a very cut and dried, simple resolution. Counselor Tripp, you've already spoken to it enough times.
One more time, go ahead. One more further road. Counselor Thompson, please, go.
Oh, sorry.
Thank you, Mayor Conrad. I, I guess, I believe that if the chairman is here of, of the chamber and one of his board are here tonight, they are fully expecting their responses and their, whatever they're going to be bringing to us to be done in a public forum. I, I also think that they are going to have to work diligently to pull nine people together in, in, in one setting. I, I have absolutely no issue with them coming to a regular meeting. It's an evening, it gives them a chance to, from two weeks from now, it gives them a chance to all get on the same page to come. They seem very willing to deal with this publicly. I don't see any reason why we would need to take this in-camera. I think that the goodwill extended here means that we are all expecting things that we say and that are sent by them to not be of a sensitive nature that anything needs to be given.
Well, my only concern is because if the resolution stands as it stated until further notice, if we do hit a roadblock because the discussion goes in a direction which is not suitable for consumption for the population, then we hit a roadblock and again, we're back to square one that it has to be readdressed again. So we will then not achieve what we're aiming for to have the result. I'm just trying to eliminate any possibility that we can resolve this ASAP, be done with it, and move on. That's the only reason. Counselor Thompson?
I hear what Counselor Tripp is saying, and I appreciate the fact that the chamber wants to be very open and transparent in, in large portions of the city. As a compromise, rather than trying to speed things up at a regular meeting because there might be a lot of other business on the agenda that we need to deal with, could we not have a special meeting earlier in that day for the sole purpose of, and have it open public, if anybody can come in, for the purpose of meeting with the Chamber of Commerce to address the concerns of council with regard to their annual general meeting?
Yeah, I'm okay with that. And if that's the case, then I don't see why we need to modify any part of this resolution because we're obviously moving at--
Well, I'll amend my amendment to the resolution to include the date of the next regular meeting, which is the 29th. To hold a special meeting on the 29th with the Chamber of Commerce.
Do we know what time would work for now?
Anytime will work. We're good. I think at 7:00 you guys meet?
Yeah, but we would like to meet--
Exactly, but you meet at 7:00, so like 5:00, 6:00, whatever works. Pretty easy to deal with, it won't be that complicated.
Five.
Five?
Yeah.
Five o'clock in this, Mr. Mayor, is that okay with you?
On a 7:00 regular meeting?
This is two hours.
I guess it's two hours.
And we have to have supper.
I'll bring dinner.
Well, then you've come to a risk of winter.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, that way the--
Yeah, I'll bring dinner.
I'll bring snacks.
Neil, I'll make dinner.
Your worship, might I suggest maybe like an early afternoon meeting, just for the fact that it gives council a lot of time to discuss and delegate, and then if there's any other further decisions that possibly need to be made at the regular meeting, it would give enough time to be able to put forward something that we can consider.
Which could be then referred to be evening.
Yes.
This is, was exactly was my concern. I would say a special meeting somewhere in the vicinity of maybe either 1:00 or 2:00 in the afternoon, which gives enough of a timeline should we not, should we be, not be able to conclude decisively on the matter. But until, so if, the next regular meeting is at the end of the month?
Or in 29th.
Okay, so again, being repetitive, the motion should still stand as it is if we're already looking for a date instead of specifically stating a date, because if that does not happen, then what happens to the motion if we have specifically given a date and it doesn't happen? You see the point?
I hear you.
Yeah. So if, if we all come together, then until further notice works fine. But Counselor Butler?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
This will be your last time.
I'm sure it is. Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm fine with setting an earlier time, but the problem is Grand Forks is open for business, and you're dealing with the chamber, which are business people that work during the day. So if you're fine with a couple of representatives from the chamber showing up to that meeting to represent the board, that's probably all you're going to get in the middle of the afternoon when you're dealing with working people in this town.
And their executive director should be in attendance as well.
And the executive director, sure, yeah. But I, I think 5:00, you get a better attendance from the board if that's your, if that's your goal is to actually hear from the whole board, you'd do better to have--
But the whole board aren't going to speak. Usually it's just, you know, it's like a director and the president's speech.
I think, I think the board could address the situation amongst themselves and have at least two or three representatives. And I think that would be sufficient because I do not believe we would be listening to the whole board in any event because there has to be some kind of unity amongst themselves and have one spokesperson for the board, which I would say would be the president. So, okay, what do we got?
So my amendment still stands for the special meeting on the 29th night.
So, so what is it?
So the amendment, instead of, until further notice, Counselor Butler has amended it to read, until the special meeting on the 29th.
Until such a time as an amicable resolution can be reached with the chamber through a special meeting on the 29th night.
So basically what you're stating, until such a time is to reach, so which means is until further notice--
Could be after that.
Yeah, it comes to the same thing.
You know my points, right? The point is we want to have a special meeting with them on the 29th.
Yeah.
Well, I think, I think in good faith, I don't think we need to have that put in a resolution.
Exactly.
Or we could just adopt my resolution as a stand.
I've learned from previous instances when I put forward motions that they've got to have a timeline attached or they don't happen.
It's true.
Not necessarily. Garciao?
Your worship, if we could get a very clear resolution, and I'm pretty sure the recording secretary is scratching her head as to--
I know, I've seen it three times and everybody's hoping it's--
Let's vote on the amendment and let's be done with it. The amendment, if it's voted down, then basically we'll vote the original.
So just iterate your--
Dash on the 29th.
You want me to reiterate it again?
Well, maybe our recording--
They can read it back.
We haven't read back, basically, we still have another lead.
I'll read it out, and then we can make the changes. Let's, let's start.
Why is this--
So your worship, I'm going to read out the beginning resolution and then council may choose to do whatever the amendments are in there, but we, we have to start the point here. So what we have for a resolution was resolve the councilman, May 15th--
So what we have for a resolution was resolve the councilman, May 15th, regular meeting. Let's see here. To for the discussion of the 2017 funding for voluntary regional chamber of commerce to be held in advance until further notice. And that's where the first resolution was.
Okay, and it was seconded by Counselor Crook.
Yes.
Now the amendment. Aplaud.
My apologies. So I'd like to strike from that until further notice and replace it with until an amicable resolution can be reached with the chamber, beginning with a special meeting on May the 29th.
Question on the amendment. So all in favor of the amendment? Anyone opposed? So Carrie.
Your worship, I just want to make sure that we have it really clear, that happened really fast, so I need to make sure that we have the wording exactly, so if possible, we could.
Sure. Can I do that? So strike from the motion until further notice and replace with until an amicable resolution can be reached with the chamber, beginning with a special meeting on May the 29th. And I'd just like to state, I will be voting against this, because obviously I don't want to put their funding on hold, so I don't want to confuse you with voting against my own amendment, but I'm voting against the motion.
And just so you're aware, Counselor Butler, by that amendment you made, you are leaving it open that they might not have funding even for a longer period of time than until further notice, because you had stated, starting with a special meeting. So no resolve is accomplished there, we will then have to wait for another meeting, which could then prolong the process into months, just so you're aware. And that's why until further notice would have been much simpler. But you have given specifics, which could now put this whole thing in a deeper jeopardy.
I'm sure you wouldn't want to do that though, would you, Mr. Mayor?
No, no, but you've just done it, so that's all I'm saying. Because when you give specifics and they don't come through, then it has to carry on again. So you've put the chamber in a very dire position. How about a question? Okay, so now we're going to call the question on the amended motion. Is it amended? We voted on the amendment. Now I'd like to have all in favor of the amended motion. Anyone opposed? So Carrie, so Counselor Trip.
Don't want a meeting on the 29th.
No. Just explain that.
Just don't want to. We didn't want the motion. We didn't want to put their funding in advance at all, ever.
Why did you amend a motion?
Yeah, why did you amend a motion?
Because it's better than your previous motion.
You amended a motion.
And you just voted against your motion.
Yes. I voted in favor of the amendment, because I didn't want to put the original motion that we were going to put forward could leave this in limbo for.
You just voted against the.
You just voted against the amended motion?
The amended motion, yes.
The amended?
Yes. I voted in favor of the amendment, Mr. Mayor.
I don't think we voted on the amendment.
It's your amendment.
We already voted in favor of the motion. Everyone voted in favor of the amendment.
Yes, we voted in favor of the amendment.
Oh, yes.
This is in favor of the amended motion, which says, yeah.
Put their funding in advance.
Until May 29th.
Yeah, which is a starting point. Okay, not necessarily.
May I have a time, please? A time, please, for that meeting? Because I would like to be able to know what time it is, please. Sorry.
Have your people call their people.
Yeah, 2:00 p.m. 2:00 p.m. Fantastic.
I think that's a much better timeline than five o'clock, because if anything goes south, we wouldn't want to have to reschedule it for another two or three weeks.
Yeah, no, I'll have a group of people there at 2:00.
Oh, I'm not just saying it on your part, I'm saying.
They may be inductee, but they'll be.
We want to expedite this. We put it at five o'clock and we don't come to a resolve, and it couldn't be another two or three weeks.
No, we will come to a resolve, sir.
Okay.
So have we voted on the motion?
Yeah, we're all done.
Yes, and Carrie.
Really?
Yeah. Counselor Trip and Counselor Butler.
We're not done yet.
That was easy.
Okay, now we're going to our second late item, which was put forward by Counselor Trip, in regards to the recording of in-camera meetings.
Do I have to read that again then, or?
Yeah.
Well, we've already discussed it, it can be moved to a whole, so basically your motion would be to.
But she needs to read it.
Read it, exactly, yeah.
That council direct staff to electronically record all in-camera meetings as per the city's closed session policy 103-1. These recordings shall remain confidential until such time as council may deem the information contained on them to be released as per policy 103-1 or destroyed with council's unanimous approval following all provincial legislation surrounding proper disposal of records.
And I'll second the motion.
Discussion. Counselor Butler?
Yeah, it's kind of ironic, Mr. Mayor, but I think what just happened here proves our point. The amount of confusion that can come up in council meetings with motions and amendments, and who said what, and whether or not it was recorded properly, well, this was just a perfect example. This is why we need our in-camera meetings recorded, because when you're dealing with issues as important as land, legal, and labor, you've got to know that you've got it right. I mean, that's just besides the point of the constant harassment that goes on within in-camera meetings. I'm tired of it. I want them to be run professionally, and if they're recorded, people will be accountable for what they've said.
As I've stated to the Counselor Butler, there is no harassment of recording in in-camera meetings. It would be your choice. I have never heard this echoed by any other counselors on this chambers, for one. The second, as I pointed out today, the main reason, because we do not only deal with land, we also deal with personnel, which is a very serious issue, that if this was ever FOI'd, we would put the corporation at major risk of litigation. And that is one of the major forefronts, and for, as you put it, what goes on in council chambers in camera, to be FOI'd, and because counselors don't agree with one another, that does not necessarily mean that it's bullying and harassment, but then even more so to portray to the public, as I had mentioned this morning, airing our dirty laundry, we would look even more dysfunctional. I think the major part here is that we have to show our professionalism even when we are in-camera, and our integrity has to be held intact and talk to one another the way it should be done. And up until now, I believe that has been kept intact. But you obviously differ with that, but an example was this morning when you left the committee of the whole meeting, totally disrespectful, without stating or recusing yourself, just leaving chambers. That, if I look at as professional and having integrity, like you said, proves it all. Counselor Thompson.
My question. I just wanted to make a couple of comments. I can't support the resolution, because I think that the purpose of minutes really is to record the actions and the decisions of council. And what I find, as we did this morning in adopting the minutes, is that it is the comments that might be recorded, of who said what, and the like. And it's open to interpretation, not only by the recorder, but if the comment is being made to or about someone, it can be misinterpreted. So I would personally like to see less recorded in the minutes, and more on the action items. Because I can recall when I worked and I did take minutes when I first started looking for the city, if we did reports, and I mean, that particular, because, you know, that isn't what I said, that isn't what I meant. So it's the interpretation of first taking the minutes, and that's not fair to the reporters. So for that reason, I am just not going to support this resolution.
Question.
Can I just, I'd just speak to it?
No.
Yeah, I think the most important part of the in-camera meeting in any meeting is that the decisions that are made after the discussion are recorded, and we have fiduciary responsibility to ensure that decisions are made and those decisions are recorded. In terms of what can come into an in-camera meeting, in terms of personnel, once again, it's, I know there's been a bit of an issue about individual council members taking their own notes. It's actually not unheard of for individual council members to take their own notes, but those notes need to be really protected, because it's still, your personal notes are still in camera, and they need to be protected, and they should be destroyed. And after, once those minutes are approved, your personal note should be destroyed. But because of the sensitive nature of what goes in camera, especially when you're talking about personnel, then once again, the discussion needs to happen, and only the decisions are actually supposed to be recorded, not the conversation itself. Because if it's FOI'd, then a person's personal information could then be made public. So I think we need to really, do have to have a look at how our minutes for best practices for in-camera minutes, maybe we need to look at that again as a corporation, but to have a digital recording, it is not best practices, and because of what is in state.
Question. Counselor Trip.
Thank you, Mayor Conrad. I'm not going to beat this thing up anymore, because I think we did a very good job of that this morning. I do just want to say that I don't agree with Counselor Ross's opinion here in terms of them not being the, sorry, I'm losing my train of thought. I guess that's just my comment, is I just don't want to beat things to death anymore. I believe that it was appropriate to bring this motion forward. I believe that it would have really helped us in our in-camera deliberations and in our relationships with each other. However, if council chooses not to go in that direction, I really have nothing further to say.
I could just speak to this for a second. Sure. Counselor Ross. In best practices, if there is something that's being said that you want recorded through the chair, you can ask that it be recorded. And it has to be agreed, that it's, what is said is actually recorded.
And that actually happened, and it didn't come.
That's been denied many times.
Question. Again, just to recap on one main issue, which we have to always be careful of, as elected officials, we are in position to protect the corporation from any litigation, which again is the burden then to the taxpayers. And it's a fine thing that something may not come out, but if the horse does get out of the barn, it's too late then to try to recoup our losses. Because through an FOI, this could happen very easily, because there is a discussion on personnel, and there's other issues that are discussed, and we may forget that personnel was discussed, but once the recording is made, all of that recording can be subject to FOI. We cannot just say, well, we're only going to release that portion. That is not possible when an FOI is issued. And once an individual's personal information or anything relevant to it is released, we are guaranteed that we're going to be facing litigation and legal costs. And that is the main element of danger going down this avenue. And I will stand with that until whatever time is necessary. Okay, let's go.
One more comment, I'd like to speak last to the motion. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. One way that this could be avoided, I mean, recording of the meetings can be owners, because our meetings go sometimes for four hours on items that need to be pulled in, and as the chair of the meeting, as he's doing right now, only allowing an appropriate amount of times for each item would help curtail the lengthy sessions that we have. And if we stick to the agenda items, personnel won't come up during a land issue, and if we, you know, stay on point and use Robert's rules to say point of order, we're off topic. If we run the meeting according to Robert's rules and stay on topic, stick to an appropriate length of time for a discussion on an item, it's easy for the staff then to review a 15-minute segment of the tape to make sure that it's appropriate before releasing it. Obviously, you're going to vote against this motion tonight, but I'd just like to state, in in-camera meetings from now on, I will continue the practice of leaving those meetings if the attacks become personal. If I'm called worse than scum again in a meeting, I will leave. I'm not going to sit under personal attacks. Unfortunately, as an elected official, we're not covered under WorkSafe VC. We can't file complaints of harassment and bullying, because we're not considered an employee or an employee. So unfortunately, I'll have no further choice than to continue to recuse myself from in-camera meetings if personal attacks arise and we do not stick to the topic of the meetings, and then be called back in to vote on the issue. I'm there to vote on the issue, to make a decision on it, not to belabor three hours of personal attacks. Thank you.
I'm very sorry for you, Counselor Butler, that you're going through such traumatic times at the in-camera meetings. I'm going to call the question now. All in favor of the motion to record in camera? All opposed? We'll move on to now questions from the public and the media. Again, please stay on the subject matter, because I think I lost my voice.
Yes, thank you, your worship. Kate Taylor from the Grand Forks, is that, let me just start here. Okay, so through you, Counselor Trip, if I may. So you're a member of the Chamber of Commerce, you're not on the board, is that correct?
That's right.
So then presumably you paid dues with the commitment of furthering the agenda of the Chamber of Commerce. Do you not feel that that puts you in a conflict of interest?
Conflict of interest is defined in the community charter as a pecuniary interest, meaning that a person would be receiving some kind of financial benefit or financial gain. I don't own a business, and so I'm considered, I think it's a member out large or something like that of the chamber. I'm there because I want to see the chamber do well. As you can see, we are not, there's not a lot of appointees to committees from council, and so just basically as an interested, concerned citizen, to see the chamber do well, I took voter membership.
May I ask a follow-up?
Go ahead.
I guess then where I'm asking the question is that you've made a financial investment of some sort in seeing the interests of the chamber move forward. So while it may not be a direct pecuniary conflict, do you feel that there are any issues with perceived conflict?
I, no, I don't. I mean, it's a membership fee, and I do not own a business.
Thank you.
Counselor Butler?
Just to further respond to Kate's question, in my counselor's report, I make reference to a decision by the Supreme Court stating that if you were a director on a society that was receiving benefits from council, that then they did find those directors in a conflict of interest. But it was very clear in the decision, it was only because they were directors of the society, and Counselor Trip's just a member out large.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I'll just, I'll raise my hand if someone else has a question, feel free. But so I guess my next question then is, through you, your worship, you cited several passages from the bylaws, a question that have apparently not been followed. I can't speak to them, because I wasn't at the meeting. In general, we don't cover AGMs. So I guess on what authority, or not what, not that language, sorry, but I guess how do we know that those bylaws weren't followed? If there was no council representative to the chamber, I'm just wondering how we know.
I guess the simple response would be, I guess you would have to address that to Counselor Trip in regards to, did you. Counselor Tripp in regards to, did you vote at that AGM?
And if my memory serves me, we weren't allowed to vote. I think what happened was, they originally said that we could, and then there were ballots given out, but then that they came back and said that those who were new members, their votes didn't count. I seem to remember something like that happening.
Only board members were allowed to vote, sir.
That's right, yeah.
Pardon me?
Only board members were allowed to vote. Members at large were not allowed to vote.
That's right. So I was not allowed to vote.
So with the bylaws states, only members and authorized representatives.
I was not allowed to vote, I think because, I guess because I was a member at large, or whether it's because I was there.
So did you vote, was the question?
No, I wasn't allowed to vote.
You should have voted.
A follow-up then. I'm concerned with the, there was particular discussion rates around the timelines in the bylaws, so the 90 days to be elected to the board, if I understand, and 30 days a member in good standing. So how do we know that those bylaws weren't followed?
That is something that was brought forward in the form of a complaint.
To you as the mayor, or?
Yes.
Thank you.
It was a written complaint.
Okay. Right. Thank you.
I'm not sure, I've never had to do this before, but is it okay if I direct a question to another member of the gallery?
Through the chair.
For clarification purposes.
Through the chair.
Through the chair, yes. Okay. So, Mr. Engen, you're faced with operations regarding tourism ramping up with the Vic and stuff. You have to hire a new executive director, and now you're watching your funding go into a kind of a limbo situation. My question to you is that, does the chamber have any sort of cushion to deal with this? Or are you in a sense on hold in terms of what you plan on doing, or what your chamber's plans are? Like hiring an executive director when your funding is in this limbo situation probably is kind of tough. I'm not sure exactly how you plan on dealing with that.
Well, we have to sit down as a group and decide, because yes, it is going to be an issue, not having money trying to hire somebody. We do need to move forward coming up to a big season where we really want to ramp things up. And now we've just lost our director and our funding all in one day, and we're trying to grow a business that really hamstrings us immensely, but we need to resolve it. By this time, there are some issues definitely with what is going on and what has gone on for quite some time. But I feel very comfortable, I'm the person that will help resolve it, to move forward.
I may just comment on the statement you made, you did not lose your funding yet.
Fair enough, sir. Fair enough, but.
It's on hold, it's not lost.
Don't have it in the pot.
You have the ability to change that.
Well, I'm here to work, and that's why I've been here all day, running back and forth trying to get this resolved, because I know there's issues, absolutely. We've done a pretty thorough investigation, and we are looking forward to moving ahead and getting this dealt with.
We as council, we as council here are not sitting here to condemn you, trust me.
Yeah, fair enough.
Because we do look at you as an organization that will benefit Grand Forks, but at the same token, it's the principle, which is the bylaws and the Constitution. And as soon as you resolve those issues, your funding has not been suspended, you haven't lost it, as you stated, it's on hold until you have the opportunity first and foremost to rectify this problem, if there is a problem.
There are some issues, absolutely, like in anything, like in any marriage, any possible, there's always something. And we have addressed it, and we are moving forward as a group to resolve it as soon as possible.
Thank you. Through you, Your Worship, to either Counselor Butler or Counselor Tripp, whoever can answer. Both counselors made comments this morning to the effect of the DVA was not authorized by the chamber to appear that morning, and just wondering how that became known to us.
Counselor Butler?
I asked the executive director at the open house.
Oh. Thank you.
Shouldn't do it, Jen. Any other?
Sorry.
No, go ahead.
It's been a long day for all of us. My next question then would be, so the statement has been made that the bylaws have never been followed, and if I'm understanding correctly, this chamber has been in existence for the last five or six years. So Your Worship, perhaps to the interim CIO, how much money has the city committed to the chamber in that time?
Twenty thousand dollars.
They raised it to $20,000 the first year that we were in council.
Counselor Butler, your question is being asked of the CIO, please, with all due respect, Robert's Rules.
Your worship, I've doubled my toes to the fire, I think it's in the tune of 20,000, I think in the last three years, and I think it was 10,000 before then. I think that they doubled it for some other initiatives, I think they were doing some kind of business license, and so I think it got to 20,000. So, you know, in five years, we'd be like, about 80,000, give or take.
Okay. Thank you for that.
But there have been no concerns raised prior to this time, to the best of your knowledge?
Not to my knowledge, I've never heard any concerns.
Okay, so this time is a little bit of a different situation, because there was a complaint. Again, go ahead.
Thank you. And to you, Your Worship, I had a question about the comment you made around the DVA signed funding. You mentioned that there would be a conditional kind of asterisk around that now that the funding.
There is no comment on that, I cannot discuss that until it's verified.
Is that an in-camera matter?
No. It's something that's come to my attention, it could be just gossip, or it could be fact, but I will look into it.
So I guess as a follow-up then, how will the DVA be moving forward with the signed project, given that the grant was awarded to the city for the DVA to administer?
They will move forward as they feel is necessary, because the grant is still there.
Thank you. I'm all in questions, guys.
Okay. Gentlemen, the third row at the table.
Jane Cup, if I might, I just will suggest this, perhaps, if you would consider this, but a series of questions, a series of your concerns listed in a numbered form, one to six, whatever it is, those concerns to expedite the chamber getting their money at the quickest possible opportunity, present the chamber with a series of questions that they got time, an hour or two, or whatever it takes to go over and provide the answers for, so that when you do have the meeting on the 29th, you're still talking, we're two weeks away before you even have a meeting, if they had a look at all the questions you had now, within the next day or two, and as a group, when they can get together, as their board, they can review those questions and have a series of answers for those questions. So when you have the meeting on the 29th, they'll come back to the six questions you have with six answers.
Right now, there isn't any, to the best of my knowledge, there is not a series of questions. The questions that are posed have already been presented, basically this evening, it's in regards to the bylaws.
Are they fully aware of all the questions specifically? Specifically aware of them?
The main questions have been presented today, and I believe the president is aware of what we're discussing here, it's regarding the bylaws and the Constitution. If there are other questions, they will be subsidiary questions when we meet with them. But the first issue that has to be addressed is why the funding was put on hold was because of the fact that during this election process, their bylaws and their Constitution was not respected. As far as that's concerned, that ends the work of the city at this point.
Okay, but let me suggest that, if they have, if they had it written down so they could specifically address, or if they have enough information that they could specifically address, that they could provide you with answers to those queries that you have almost immediately, and so that by the, and if you do a little bit of back and forth by the 29th, you can have, it's a matter of formality, and the issue is solved.
I don't believe that's normal procedure, though, we would eat with them back and forth, and it would be held in a meeting with all of council, and at the meeting it would be addressed. But again, I read out two sections that are the main concern. Those have to be addressed.
Can you repeat those again, Mr. Mack, because I didn't write them down?
Anyway, I read my terms.
Yeah, I understand. Thank you. To.
Sir, if you could just repeat those sections of the bylaws so that we could look them up.
They're not on the chamber website.
Yeah. They're accessible from the chamber website.
Counselor Ross, if you may.
I couldn't find them on the chamber website.
No, good.
I might, it's a pretty simple website.
First one is eligibility for election as a director. Article 4.2, any individual active member or any authorized representative of an active member may be elected to the board after 90 days of holding membership in the chamber. 4.18, only members and authorized representatives in good standing for 30 days prior to the annual general meeting will be allowed to vote. There's other articles in there, but these are the two that basically stick out right now. So I mean, it might be a simple resolve. Hopefully it will be. That would be great, so we don't have to keep on with this, as I call it, meeting dead wars.
Thank you. One more. So you mentioned that the concerns around the chamber were raised here in a written complaint, but the reason that this seems to have come up, at least at this morning's meeting, was through the DVA's delegation. So my question is, was the city taking action on this before this morning's meeting?
Was the city taking action on what?
On the issue of the chamber's election.
Well, you can speak to it, but I can't do it. Go ahead, Counselor Thompson.
Well, I'm the one that brought up the concerns at the meeting this morning. The DVA was here to discuss funding for their own purposes, but their funding comes through the chamber. And so I also have been made aware, not by written complaint, but verbally from the taxpayer, that the procedures contained in their constitution and bylaws have not been followed. And that caused me great concern, and so therefore I put forward the motion that funding be held in advance. And so I stand by that. I think that is something, because council is a fiduciary position with the taxpayers' money, that we have to ensure that the organizations that we are funding, or funding, are operating legitimately.
Yeah, that's a good point.
Follow-up to that, if I may. So would this issue still have come up without the delegation here this morning?
Probably would have, yeah.
Yes, because there was already talk. And as the, I believe it was, during the presentation from the DVA, they had mentioned that there is concerns that they're not able to communicate properly with the chamber anymore. I think that was some of the language that was in their discussion. So there definitely was problems.
There's issues.
Yeah, there's issues, and the DVA, as was stated, is a subcommittee of a chamber, so if that is the case, and there's already problems internally, then that has come to the awareness of the city, who again are the short arm, if you want to call it, from the taxpayers that are doing the funding. And as Counselor Butler had stated, that there's been, they've never followed their bylaws. So that's even more concerning now, because that was an element we didn't even look at at first, because there was never any issues brought forward. But now that has been compounded by the fact that now issues have been brought forward. So they have to be addressed. And like I said, again, without going on and on about this, it's a very simple matter, it can probably be resolved very simply, hopefully it can be, and that would be the best interest for all parties concerned, and that is the goal we're trying to achieve here. But until such time, in all fairness, we have to protect the taxpayers.
Thank you.
Motion to adjourn.
One last thing I'd like to point out, in the interest of clarity, for hysterical accuracy here, historically, here.
Yeah, you got to write the first line.
Ten years ago, when Mr. Crog was mayor, I ended up going to the chamber AGM, the actual chamber of the Grand Forks, not this chamber. And I was her plus one, and when they were taking names for people to stand, the person sitting across me put my name forward. I wasn't even a member. And I said, okay, I'll let my name stand, because I figured, nobody knows me when it comes to voting, I won't get voted in, not realizing that there was not going to be any vote, and I found myself on the board of the chamber.
Point in case.
Guess who's at fault.
As Counselor Butler pointed out, nonprofits tend to be a bit more along that way. I ended up the president of the Historical Society exactly the same way. I walked into a meeting of theirs, and they knew I had time on my hands, and they literally rushed over to the door and said, oh, hey, we hear you have time. And by the time I left that meeting, that luncheon, I was the president.
And we've been taking you for it ever since.
But I'm not trying to trivialize the fact that you're actually trying to protect our assets and everything else, I get that. But just for some context, basically, I'm sorry, Mr. Buck, I don't know if the rules on the chamber back then were the same as now, or loosey-goosey, but just so you know, it goes on, it has gone on for a long time.
But we understand the 90 and 30-day rule, and why it is there to protect the integrity of organizations.
And the main issue, sir, is the fact that if this is so-called, just close an eye to it, it can set a precedent. So now if we have organizations that we are funding with much higher amounts of funding, that's where the problem can start. Because then, if, let's say, as an example hypothetically, the gallery or anyone follows, then they can say, well, the same thing happened there, and you funded them. So the precedent issue is another very serious issue, that it can set a precedent. And again, you know, council could say, it's not our money really, it's the taxpayer's money. That would be a terrible approach if ever that was taken. So we are here, and we were elected to look out for the taxpayers and the constituents, and that's what we're doing. But on the other note, like I said again, and I will repeat it again, hopefully we'll come to a very simple resolve to this, and that would be great, because you know what? We burned a lot of time today on this.
I agree.
And I think it hopefully was not wasted.
Well, as Mr. Shovelin, who is no longer with us, told me once, that's exactly what happened at the credit union. It was taken over in one meeting like that.
So, there you have it. Counselor Trump? Motion to adjourn. Yes, ma'am, motion to adjourn.
Will we need a second here for that?
Oh, we got another.
Can I revisit something here in just a minute? With the recording of the in-camera meeting minutes, or discussions. I thought that they could have been recorded and held, so that until everyone was satisfied that what was said was correct, and then destroyed. I don't, I didn't think you would have to hold them long, only until you were all satisfied with what, with what they contained, and then.
Unless an FOI is presented.
But that's, that would be within, you'd have to have a very quick FOI. This could be done very quickly, I would think, within a week or two or something. So that was, they wouldn't have had to have been held for a long time, I would have thought. This is only for your own in-house perusal, perusal, only for you guys.
Again.
Because it is in camera.
Very dangerous avenue, and I'm sure if this would have proceeded, and had we hypothetically gone down that litigation road, I'm sure as a taxpayer, you would have felt differently then, and would have said, wow, we should never have done this. But then unfortunately, it's too late. So we have to, again, we have been elected to safeguard your best interest, because you are the stakeholders. And if we play lightly with those subjects and those issues, then we are not doing our job, absolutely not. We don't think these things up overnight and all of a sudden come up with these ideas. They are based on factual, and our CIO did a lot of research on other communities, but more so, my main concern is, again, is the personnel issue, a very, very serious, which litigation can come in a heartbeat with issues like that. So we're not going to play chance with our stakeholders' money. And that's about all I can say.
We'll have to vote on that.
Yeah. Okay, you. All in favor, the chairman?
May I speak, please?
No. You really want to do this to this?
Good evening, Your Worship. My name is Nigel James, I'm a resident of Grand Forks.
My name is Nigel James, I'm a resident of Grand Forks, and also a good evening, counselors. I must chastise Mr. Johnson for when he said the last, it was his last question, not my question, the last one. I'm very pleased that you said at the end of the last, the pre, the penultimate question about how important to look after taxpayers' money, because my question is regarding that. I used to be on the library board, and a member of the library board was one of the council's, counselor's share wires, and she would come along to our monthly meetings, and she did not have a vote, but she then returned to council and reported on it, the high days and holidays and that sort of thing that was relevant. And likewise, the other counselors were members, I believe, of Gallery Two, the museum, perhaps, and also, what's another one? The Gallery Two and, gosh, come on, the museum, sorry, where am I thinking? And the library, or anyway, the various men, counselors were members of the boards, although I think they all had non-voting, they were there as observers. And as a member of the library board at that time, I enjoyed having a council representative there to make sure that we did not put a foot wrong. It made us a darn sight sharper, I like to think, because I didn't want to have bad news getting back to the council on the, on the report by the counselor who attended our meetings. Now, and I realize now, you have the three monthly reports given by the organizations who receive public money, but I feel that today's efforts, or disasters, shall we call them, reflect that there hasn't been careful council observance of what goes on in some of these other organizations that get council money, that, council money, that get our money. And I believe that that is one of the main important things that could be done. And I don't expect an answer anyway tonight, but it's just a comment to, for yourselves to consider that maybe the three monthly one is too long, it's an imposition for them to come here, because usually it's the boss and the executive, et cetera, who's there, and the museum or whatever else has to almost close down during the time that they maybe have to come and give their presentations to you. It would be, from their point of view, I'm sure, much more convenient to hold their normal monthly meetings and a member of the council going there. Now, I understand counselors are busy, and it takes time and so on, but with six counselors and about four or five maximum of places to go, then people could arrange their lives to go there for the hour, an hour and a half, the normal meeting. That's really what I have to say, is maybe to reconsider the way that we do business here in the city.
The concern with that is, Mr. James, and we have already discussed that, the concern with that is that if you send one individual counselor, you are dependent, and I'm not questioning the credibility of the counselor that is there as an observer. If something gets portrayed or issued back to council as a secondhand, and that's what it would be, then there could be certain items missing from the report back from the counselor. Whereas, that's why we have a committee of the whole, where the organization presents itself, and they are able to give it the information to all of council, and every counselor, with their own independent views, can question the organization on the questions. Whereas if you send one counselor, where does that leave the rest of council? Because council is still a body as a whole, and this is where the element of having it at a committee of the whole, every counselor gets his opportunity, or her opportunity, to address the delegation or the organization that comes forward, because every counselor's questions are not going to be the same. We all agree to disagree, as you've already well noticed, but the bottom line is, this is an opportunity for all of council as a whole, at the committee of the whole, to present their questions.
Yes, that is a valid comment as well, but the other way of looking at it from the point of view of the people making the presentation, they will present what they want you to hear, rather than what they want to hide, if there is anything. Whilst the counselor, sorry, whilst the counselor who is there at the normal meeting can ask other questions and delve and dig and so on, and see what the hell goes on.
Then what about the counselor, the council, if this counselor comes back, and then the counselors per se would say, well, did you ask them about that, or did you ask them about that? You see what I'm saying? There could be missing voids in the complete context of what the message that the organization is bringing to council, because if we are funding an organization, it is only, only pertinent that all of council is able to address the questions on behalf of the stakeholders.
I see, yes, and I agree with that, but however, the comment you made, if, shall we say, a counselor who was representing, who went along, and had missed a couple of things and was prodded in the ribs by somebody, ask them next time, you're going to get the answer before you get the next three month normal report, because it's on a monthly basis.
Yeah, but why wait three months for the next one? You can have it all at once for everybody at one time?
Because, you only got, you only got the chance of four times per annum to ask questions, whilst the counselor can go along and ask questions at the meeting on about 12 times a year.
It's the same perception that I have, when I always say, if three people are looking at something, six eyes are always better than two.
True, but unfortunately, also the police will tell you that the six eyes see three different things anyway.
There, you just hit it, and that's exactly my reasoning for that, so that all of council can ask the question, because every question will be different. Every individual has a different aspect on the subject matter.
Yeah, there are many ways of killing a cat.
Counselor Crog, and then Counselor Butler, if I can... Okay. No disrespect to anybody, but if we're going to continue on with the meeting, I do have to excuse myself, I'm supposed to be picking up my mom's after, so, yeah. We already have the motion.
Just a quick comment, Nigel, what you suggested is regular practice in every other city that I've talked to, at the AKBLG and UBCM that we go to, you're not on, you're not on Facebook.
Okay. All in favor to adjourn?